You're all set.
Okay, so I will call the December 7th meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board to order. Presently, we have President Pete Funderson, Cassandra Serswello, John Montorsha, and myself. That's four out of five. I will need to announce that we are recording this meeting. And if anyone else is recording the meeting, I would ask them to stick up their hand in Zoom and let us know who they are and why they're at least let us know who they are and in fact, they're recording.
I see nobody recording.
Hearing none, we can move right along to the approval of the minutes of November 16th, 2021. If everyone has had a chance to look at them, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I wasn't good. I can't second it.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion amendments, corrections? Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Funderson, you're extending.
I've stayed, yes.
Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston, aye. Cassandra?
Aye.
And Russ, we're just voting on the minutes.
Okay.
Started without you.
No problem.
You, do you approve of the minutes?
I do.
Okay. So that passes for nothing, and I turn the meeting over to the chairman.
Okay. Mr. Torsha, first item of business?
Yes, first item, case SPRW 2021-52. Request for a site plan review waiver for Ant Mechanical LLC, a home office at 58 St. Joseph Drive, assessors parcel ID 39-18-8 on a plus or minus .34 acre site in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant is Anthony Daniele, 38 St. Joseph Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
Hello. Oh, there we go.
Hi, how are you?
Great, yourselves?
Good, thanks for joining us tonight. So what we'd like to just find out a little bit about yourself or about the business. You know, are, you know, are there people coming to that location? More about the type of business you'll be doing at that spot.
Well, also, first off, the, it said 58 St. Joseph Drive, it's 38 St. Joseph Drive. Um, but yeah, there's a highly unlikely anybody's actually been coming to the house. It's gonna be a mobile mechanic type setup. Um, most of the people I've been working with, living with, all that stuff have had their own garages. Um, just go basically helping them help get their own cars up and running and it's strictly mobile. I definitely have too many car, too many of my own projects here to bring anything here, that's for sure. Not regardless of the zoning, I wouldn't want to bring anybody's stuff.
So that begs the question, do you have a commercial vehicle?
Uh, no, I do not. However, the insurance said I didn't need one and the I had to put a rider on my regular vehicle in order to do that.
Are you storing any supplies at that location?
No.
Okay. Questions from the board? So John Torsha, board member Torsha, we cannot see you and you are muted. Okay.
Just was having some technical difficulties.
Okay, yeah, it seems to be the case tonight. So if there are no other, no questions from the board, do I have a motion to approve the waiver?
So moved, George.
Second.
Motion made in second, so by roll call or any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you. Thank you. Okay, next item, Mr. Clark.
Hold on one moment.
Sure.
Okay, next. The next item, sorry about that. Next item is case SPRW 2021-53. Request for a site plan review waiver for the installation of two 12-foot by 14-foot ground level warehouse overhead doors on an existing structure at 21 Deer Park Drive, assessors parcel ID 22-7-4 on a plus or minus 4.77 acre lot in the industrial zoning district. Applicant McKenzie Vault Incorporated, PO Box 264, East Long Meadow, MA.
So we have a Tim and a Scott.
Yes, hello, how are you?
I'm well. There you are, okay.
So yeah, so. Yeah, absolutely. So I'm Tim McKenzie and we've been in business in town for just about 30 years. And this year, last year, we moved from Benton Drive over to Deer Park. And the additional overhead doors, we're just gonna use those for ventilation in the summertime.
Okay. Questions from the board members?
Uh, yep, will this affect the parking at all?
It will not affect the parking. The doors are actually located on the other side of the building of the parking lot and it opens up to grass.
Okay, great. Hearing no further questions, do I have a motion to approve the waiver?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Uh, Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. You know, thank you for your continued investment in the town, so it's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Take care.
Bye.
Next item, Mr. Clark.
All right, item number three, case SPRW 2021-54. Request for a site plan review waiver for the cruise store Travel Agency Company at 145 Shaker Road, GIS 143 Shaker Road, assessors parcel ID 17-65-0 in an existing structure in the industrial zoning district. Applicant Seabys Travel Service LTD, CO Don Anderson, 145 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow, MA.
Don, are you here?
Yeah, I'm just trying to see why the video isn't showing, but can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, very strange, but hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi there, G2.
Hey, G1. So basically, the cruise store's been in business for 30 years. It celebrated 30th anniversary last month. And we've been at East Long Meadow since 1992 and opened up the cruise store at the familiar location at 55 Maple at December of 1997. And then, uh, then we stopped working out of that office in January of this past, or December 31st this past year and worked remotely. And it's been, you know, as I said, it's been a challenging time, but we can obviously see the upturns coming. And the right opportunity to develop a new cruise store came, came together at 145 Shaker Road, owned by Danny Burek, right across the street from AW Brown, which is kind of interesting because our former location was AW Browns. And this current location is across the street from the Long Jill, now known as AW Brown. So it's funny how fate works, but Danny Burek owns the spot, the location is perfect for the next generation cruise store, which is gonna be focusing on cruises and travel, all types of vacations. And the focus is gonna be on technology, the internet speed's gonna be six times faster, CAD 6 is run throughout the place. And we're excited, we're confident that people are traveling again and will be traveling again. And we want to be in place for that happening now and in the future.
Questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the waiver?
So moved.
Second. George, did you second that?
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just saying, I'm really glad to see that Don's back in the storefront again and that he's staying in town.
Yep, very positive news.
Thank you.
Okay, by a roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Yeah, I, okay, and I'm a yes as well. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, best of luck.
Thank you, everybody. Take care now.
Bye bye. Next item, Mr. Clark?
Yes, item number four, case SPRW 2021-55. Request for a site plan review waiver for Creature Comfort Series, a home office at 195 Porter Road, assessors parcel ID 60-14-1 on a plus or minus .66 acre lot in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Kelly Glover, 195 Porter Road, East Long Meadow, MA.
Wait a second for the petitioner to come in. So Kelly, we only see a name and it appears that you are muted.
I think Nina told me she may be trying to call in by phone. Bethany, what's unmute on a phone?
Hello?
Hello.
Hey, Kelly.
I'm sorry, this is my first Android. I don't know how it works.
Okay, so tell us, tell us about the business and what it is, you know, when you will be conducting business there at that location and that we'll start from there.
Okay, so first you guys got the name wrong. It's Creature Comfort Services.
Okay.
And what it is, is it is a pet care service. So it's dog walking, dog sitting, cat sitting, pet taxi, um, and then just regular house sitting as well. And the space would just be the office, no one would be coming here.
Okay, all right. So Bethany, how is the name in the application? And does it need to be amended?
No, it doesn't need to be amended. The services is just missing a V in the agenda.
Okay, all right. Questions from the planning board members?
Uh, yeah, Kelly, I assume you're not doing any pets at the house. You're going to other people's houses. Okay.
I'm going to their houses, yes.
Great.
Okay, all right, okay. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve, approve this waiver?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made in second and any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck with that.
Thank you so much.
All right, take care. Next item, Mr. Clark.
All right, item number five, case SPRW 2021-56. Request for a site plan review waiver for the construction of a 12-foot by 20-foot gazebo at 302 Benton Drive, assessors parcel ID 10-9-2 on a plus or minus 5.07 acre lot in the industrial zoning district. Applicant WF Young Incorporated, 302 Benton Drive, East Long Meadow, MA.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Not bad, how are you?
So you need to tell us a little bit about what you, what you're planning to do there.
Sure, so we're a manufacturing company and we would just like to build a gazebo in our backyard so we could host like outside activities and meetings.
And, and would they be for your employees?
Yes.
Okay, and so no outside individuals coming in, no charging for events or anything like that, right?
No, no, strictly for employee and business use.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Uh, yeah, do we know that this speaks to setback requirements for the zone?
Bethany?
Sure, let me just pull this up. Um, I'm not sure if Kevin has signed off on that part yet. I don't know if he saw the plan. However, I'm guessing he would check off on it before it's actually set in the ground.
So do you understand what we're looking at Alexis? So.
Uh, the positioning of it?
Yeah. So to have a structure, and this is considered a structure, there are lot line, you know, requirement setbacks from, from the property lines that would need to be complied with. So I think what we might suggest, if there's no other further discussion, that we make a motion contingent upon approval of the sighting of this by the building inspector.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Funderson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, but I, okay, I'll just second that.
Okay. Uh, motion made in second, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I think we need to understand that a structure like this with probably no electricals does not require a building permit. And so by making it contingent on the agreement of the building inspector, we're imposing that he probably will not issue a building permit, but at least will issue a citing agreement that it's where it's supposed to be.
Okay, okay.
George, you're required to get a building permit or a shed in your backyard.
No.
There you are.
No, if it's smaller than a certain size, you're not allowed, you don't have to have a building permit.
No, I got one for mine, floor by 16 shed.
And, and I asked for building permit, I needed a license permit.
I don't know about that.
Well, for this, for this purpose, so I think you'll see what the contingency is and it should not be a problem whatsoever. So just work with the town. Okay. So we have a motion, it's been seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you for, for your continued development here in the town of East Long Meadow.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays, everyone.
Take care. Next item, Mr. Torsha.
All right, item number six, case SPRW 2021-57. Request for a site plan review waiver for Humble Vision Photography, a photography studio at 38 Harkness Avenue, assessors parcel ID 12-1-3 in an existing structure in the business zoning district. Applicant Sarah Maya Cologne, 38 Harkness Ave, East Long Meadow, MA.
So while we're waiting for the petitioner to come in, Bethany, we've had a number of photography, photography studios come in. Uh, I think they were all in residential districts. So are there any prohibiting factors in a business district?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
You're not, you're not supposed to anybody to come to the house though, I believe, correct?
For if it was in residential, this case is in a business zone.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. Hello, how are you tonight?
Hi, I'm doing well. Good evening.
Good, so tell us about the, tell us about the business, hours of operation, what you plan on doing there, so forth and so on.
All right, so my, my photography business is based on children, photography, newborn photography, family, maternity, what else? Those are my main sessions. Um, hours of operation, they do vary because it all depends on the, the workflow as in the request of the appointment. Um, sometimes I might see one person and then I won't see another person, another client till like another two days or so. So that's how it works with photography. However, this is the busy season, so most likely will be five days a week. Um, once Christmas, the holidays are over, I'll be probably in business more than, no more than three days per week. Saturdays and Sundays are my busiest days. That's when you probably will see more client. Um, but that's about it.
Okay. Questions from the board? Pretty straightforward, okay. Do I have a motion to approve this waiver?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Best of luck to you and, and good luck.
Thank you, have a good evening, y'all.
Take care, bye bye. Mr. Torsha, next item, please.
All right, item number seven, case SPRW 2021-58. Request for a site plan review waiver for the Big E Book, a home office at 118 Lee Street, assessors parcel ID 54-27-6 on a plus or minus .64 acre lot in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Ashley Kelleher, 118 Lee Street, East Long Meadow, MA.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I think you've probably been listening, so tell us a little bit about yourself and your company and I'm fascinated by the name of the company, so tell us a little bit about that as well.
Yeah, um, three years ago, my two boys, who are actually students at Meadowbrook, um, co-wrote a book with myself and about the Biggie. And we have partnered with the Eastern Lakes Exposition and published the book. And now I'm just looking to open up a home this, um, to kind of just continue the publishing process and the printing process and really just send emails and um, you know, get the book a little bit more well-known in the area. So just a small little office.
All right, questions from the board? Pretty straightforward, hearing no further questions, uh, so a motion to approve the site plan waiver.
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Sounds fascinating, uh, best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Take care.
You too.
Mr. Torsha, next item.
Item number eight, case SPRW 2021-59. Request for a site plan review waiver for Edelman Financial Engines LLC, a financial investment advising company at 382 North Main Street, Suite 201, assessors parcel ID 13-11-A in an existing structure in the commercial zoning district. Applicant Dave Metzmannbach, PO Box 80600, Indianapolis, Indiana.
I see a David Merrill trying to come into the meeting. Mr. Merrill, we cannot see you and I was gonna say you were muted, but I don't think you're muted now.
I apologize, thank you, thank you for your indulgence. Um, yes, I'm representing Dave Metzmannbach, I report to him, he's actually traveling on business right now. He asked me to sit in on his behalf.
Okay, so, so we like to know about the company, um, what you plan to do at that location, hours of operation, number of people who might be, you know, coming and going, the parking situation, so if we can start with it, with that.
Absolutely, and we are an up and running business right now. We're currently located at 601 North Main Street in East Long Meadow. Uh, we were simply moving to another location, giving up our lease at the one location, moving to the other, uh, there at 382. Um, we are an investment advisory, financial planning firm. Um, we, um, two companies merged back in 2018. Uh, Edelman Financial Services and Financial Engines to form Edelman Financial Engines. And we have 90-plus, um, uh, investment planning offices across the country, coast to coast, border to border. Um, and have done business there in East Long Meadow for a few years now. Um, and just, uh, are looking to relocate to the, to what we feel is a better location.
Okay. Can you tell me how many employees you have at that location?
At that location, we have two. It's basically our, our resident planner and then his assistant. And they are gonna be doing business basically 8:30 in the morning to 5:00 uh, in the evening, Monday through Friday, Saturdays by appointment, sometimes. It would typically be, um, very low traffic, uh, coming in and out of there. It'll basically be a client, uh, you know, a couple coming in sometimes to sit down, uh, not large numbers of people or anything like that, uh, pretty much one-on-one or, uh, doing business, uh, you know, with a couple to come in as a prospect or a client, that type of thing to review their portfolio and plan.
Good, thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, a motion to approve the site plan waiver.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Aye.
Mr. Funderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you for your relocation within town.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays to all of you.
Take care. Best of luck. Bye bye. Next item, Mr. Torsha.
So this is a A and R, uh, number nine, case A and R 2021-07, South Bend Lane, request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to require subdivision approval under subdivision control law for the creation of three parcels in remaining land. Parcel A, plus or minus 9,061 square feet lot containing a portion of 43 South Bend Lane, assessors parcel ID 54-6-0. Parcel B at plus or minus 4.47 acre lot containing a portion of 28 Ronald Road, assessors parcel ID 66-23A-0. Parcel C, a plus or minus 37.82 acre lot containing the entirety of 0 Pease Road, assessors parcel ID 55-8-0, the entirety of 125 Pease Road, assessors parcel ID 55-7-0, and a portion of 43 South Bend Lane, assessors parcel ID 54-6-0. Remaining land consists of a plus or minus 31.8 acre lot, all located in the Residence A zoning district. Applicant Marlene Goldstein, 43 South Bend Lane, East Long Meadow, MA.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
So in layman's terms, can you tell us what you're planning on doing there?
Uh, they're basically, I mean, as you guys are aware, this property will be in front of you again soon, it's been in front of you in the past. Uh, basically, right now, they're just doing a, a little cleaning up and, and A and R-ing out a couple of parcels that won't be involved in, in a future subdivision.
So it will not be involved as part of the project that came before us?
Nope, parcel B is a separate parcel that'll be, that is currently labeled not a building lot. Uh, parcel C is additional land that joined 125 Pease Road to create parcel C. And the remaining land will be the, the future subdivision.
Okay. Questions from the board? George?
I assume we have the, the proper frontage. I assume we have the, the proper frontage on all of the parcels?
With the, yeah, correct, with the exception of parcel B, which is not a building lot until further action, though, by any board.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Bethany, any concerns from your point of view?
No, sir.
Okay. So this is a motion to endorse the plan. Do I hear a motion to endorse the plan?
I've still moved.
Second. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none by roll call. And Mr. Smith, if you could just wait. One moment after the roll call, that would be great. Ms. Sarah Swallow.
Hi.
Mr. Kingston.
Hi.
Mr. Punderson.
Hi.
Mr. Torsia.
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. So I guess I'm gonna ask this question, Mr. Smith. So it was. That property or that subdivision was in front of us early in two thousand and twenty-one. Do you know when it's anticipated to come back before this board?
I do not know the exact date that they're, but they, they have done some additional work out there. And they've done some alterations to the layout and things like that. I think sooner than later, but I don't know exactly when the submitted date is.
Bethany, do you know anything more?
Do not.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you. Have a nice day, guys.
Take care. Mr. Torsia, next item.
All right, continued public hearings. Item number one, case DN twenty twenty-one dash zero three. Ground mounted photovoltaic installations bylaw amendments, amendment. For the purpose of amending and clarifying the town of East Long Meadow zoning bylaw section seven point five. Ground mounted photovoltaic installations, schedule of uses, section three point zero four one. Ground mounted photovoltaic arrays by adding language permitting ground mounted photovoltaic installations in residence zoning districts. Petitioner, East Long Meadow Planning Board. This is continued from September the twenty-first. October fifth, October nineteenth, and November the sixteenth.
So I'm going to ask Bethany to step in. So the current status, Bethany.
Sure, so I think what we've been stuck on is really what we want to define as. Small, medium, and large, or if that's even how you'd like to define the solar arrays in residential zones. So I wrote up a memo that I'd sent out yesterday. The question, or the other big question was how can we ensure the amended bylaw will withstand future solar developments? The hard answer is we can't really. However, on talking to the town attorney, he said the bottom line is any regulation is better than no regulation at all. So his, his thought process was let's do the best we can, keeping in mind that we can't predict the future or what. The appeals court will, will come out with and what judge we might end up with at any future point. He said to focus on the public health, safety, and welfare that's mentioned in chapter forty A, section three. That's really the only guidance we have when it comes to creating a solar bylaw. And he also suggested that we steer away from how solar energy might be used. So if a residential property owner puts up solar. Suggested not trying to regulate if they end up selling that or using it for their own energy purposes. I also talked to quite a few other municipalities in the area and how they were defining small, medium, and large developments and if that's working for them. People seem to put both the footprint of the solar array and. The energy powered from it in their definitions. However, County Value Planning Commission suggested just putting the footprint because. They suspect that panels will become smaller. And developers will try to put as many panels as possible. In any given footprint that they are required to stick to. So those are kind of the gist of my memo. I did put out some information there about. You know, how big the average-sized residential solar panel is and what kind of power that generates. So we can take that into consideration when we think about what the max footprint. You would like to see for a small-scale solar versus a large.
So before I kind of continue the public hearing, any comments from the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
Having read the hard work that Bethany brought forward to us, having read it. When you look at how the towns progress out into the, the less residential areas, they become pretty liberal with what they allow. One of the towns said it's allowed anywhere. You know, it doesn't seem, I think they're gonna wish they were a little stricter in the future. And I'm kind of okay with how they measure up a medium, a small, medium, and a large. I still, I mean, those, those, those terms and those, the, the, the lot size of the, of the actual. Solar panels seems to be logical. You know, saying it can be just so big because it, it, it produces so many watts or point, how many megawatts or whatever. But I do maintain that. In residential areas, if you're gonna put a ground-mounted solar votaic. System in that, you know, like one that follows the sunward, so fairly large panel. Like a big movie screen moving in the yard on a, on a pedestal. It adjusts. Latitude, longitude, you know, as, as the sun goes, it follows the sun. There should definitely be setback regulations and screening regulations to protect, because that's what we're supposed to do, is protect the public. And protect the neighborhoods. Also, when you look at the safety concerns, you start getting up into a large DC. You emit your DC-producing system, it's dangerous. You get a kid in there, you know, DC is different than AC, DC will fry you. You can't let go of it. So if you're looking at the safety regulations, I think we should have. Safety regulations, you know, definitely outlined for the small, medium, and the large, which they're probably gonna be all the same thing access to. You know, any safety measure, you might have to have like fire or anything like that. So that's, that's kind of what I came up with. We just have to really define the square footage thing. And you can pretty much define that for a house by what Bethany came up with. And I would like to put a, a, in a residential area that it could be no more than a hundred, hundred twenty percent of the uses of that actual home. You know, according to square footage. That's what I came up with.
Other comments on the board? So I'm thinking logistically here. Bethany is about to leave employment with the town, I believe, on December twenty. Twenty-three of, December twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-five. Only kidding you, Bethany. So. We, we, we definitely need to at least vote. On something. So that we, it can be forwarded to the town council. Who I believe will certainly, as they have done at other things that we've forwarded to them and rightfully so. Had an opportunity to. You know, go through it with a fine-tooth comb, potentially make changes, et cetera. So I guess before I open to the public, I, I will ask Bethany. To create a final draft. And that would be something that we would vote on and then forward to the town council. And then when I'm asked to appear in front of them, well, as being the petitioner, I will at least. Continue to explain to them that this is the best we could come up with based upon. Everything we've been informed from town council, from the research Bethany has done, so forth and, and so on. So if everybody's okay with that as a process. Because we do need to get this off our plate and Bethany's plate before she leaves, but. And with that.
Sorry, just a question for the board. So Kevin Duquette, our building inspector, and I also support this is, is treating this, the small-scale solar as an accessory. Structure, so they would fall under those requirements. Those are already made up and it would be consistent with what we already have. I just wanted to run that by you all and get your thoughts on that.
I, I like that, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. I forgot about that point. Hey, Bethany, let me ask you a question. Do, do you think if we limited to like a hundred twenty, hundred twenty percent of the need of that particular house, that that would fly? Or do you think that would get shot?
I think that, that kind of falls into the gray area of potentially over-regulating it.
Something.
Yeah, well, if we regulate where the square footage, I think. Because they can either store it, and I'm sure there'll be technology that comes out where you can create excess and then store it for later use.
Yeah.
You can.
Yeah. The limiting, the percentage, because they have ones now where you can store it on like the generator, like the Tesla ones that they make. The Tesla solar panels, they come, you can buy or whatever, the generator. And it will store up to like X amount already, so if there's a power outage. But I don't hate to disagree, but I don't think we should limit it because. I mean, solar cars are semi-popular now and they could increase in popularity, so. If you say you can only use a hundred and twenty percent of what the household needs, but then. If they have the. Solar car that they then want to power with the solar energy from their home, that might be more than twenty percent over whatever their one hundred percent for the home is.
I see.
I, I would agree with that. I, I think a hundred twenty percent, a percentage is unenforceable. Because you can't tell what a particular home is gonna use strictly by the square footage. It depends on what's going on in there, what kind of lights they have, how much entertainment, you know, they have, whatever. They have ten TVs, you know, they, they could do that, so it's really unenforceable.
Well, I think Bethany said that, and you know, that's what she conveyed to us, is that doing it by square footage is probably the best way to do it.
Of the footprint.
Yeah, the footprint, exactly.
I think that will be more consistent as time goes on and technology advances. Otherwise, we'd have to continually come back to it and. And fix that energy usage.
And I like the idea of classifying it as an accessory structure because again, we have everything in place for that already.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So I'm gonna, so this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. See if there's anyone who wishes to talk on this issue.
Apparently not.
Okay, so I'm not gonna close the public hearing. We will. Do I need a motion to vote to continue the public hearing? Yes. So do I have a motion to continue the public hearing until December twenty-first?
I move to continue the public hearing to December twenty-first at six PM.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, so on the motion to continue. Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Hi.
Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
And I'm a yes as well. So I guess. So Bethany, you need to take all the recommendations, you need to put it in the form of. You know, in, in order or for us to be able to. Be ready to address and vote on that.
Yep, I think really my questions tonight were on the definitions and the accessory. Structure, so that's definitely helpful and I should be able to get moving, have something on the table.
All right. Additional business, Mr. Torsia?
Yes, we've got a approval of the twenty twenty meeting schedule.
All right, anything unusual in that meeting schedule?
We did adjust it slightly. In the past, we have rearranged the meeting dates when a. A election night has disrupted the schedule. That tends to put us in sync with town council meetings, so instead of doing that, we are canceling a meeting if it coincides with an election date. And that way, hopefully, we will not have that problem with town council overlapping.
Good idea. Okay. That's, that doesn't require a vote, I can't imagine, so. Okay, additional business, Mr. Torsia?
We've got the director's report.
Okay.
Not too much to report. It's been relatively quiet for the planning department. We will have the Verizon Wireless case back before the zoning board next Monday. They did send over additional material, which I believe Nina has or will send out to the planning board as well. Just to keep you guys in the loop and I expect they will be on the December twenty-first media agenda. Ready for the board's continued review.
Yeah, okay. All right. Hearing no other business, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, second. All right. I can't believe I'm gonna do this by, but by roll call. Mr. Torsia?
Hi.
Ms. Sarah Swallow?
Hi.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
And I'm a I, I, I. Everybody, have a great night. Take care.
Great evening.
See you then.